Answer the pledge. Does he, if you could, lead us in the pledge?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence for our men and women serving in the armed forces. Next is public comment. Walter.
We have a tab on Roger. There is nobody on fish.
No.
I like it.
All right.
Which show? Most to adjourn. Yeah. Second.
Okay, so I'd like to do before we do our mayor's remarks, if it's okay with the council, is I'd like to give a few proclamations to some amazing young people here tonight. And just astounding, astounding people. One thing that's great about our town is we have people, young and old, that have talents and treasures that just are amazing. So I'd like to highlight a couple of our youth, some of the amazing things they do. So Michaela, I'd like for you to come up first, if you could. Come on up here. And Michaela, this is, I'd like to present you with a mayoral proclamation for all of your achievements that you've done. Quite outstanding. Whereas Michaela Dumas was born in 2000 in Danbury Hospital to Stephanie Dumas, and whereas Michaela is currently a senior at New Milford High School, graduating in June 2018, God bless, with academic achievements on the honor and high honor rolls. She will be attending Southern Connecticut University for Nursing in the fall of 2018, and whereas Michaela has achieved many accomplishments in several sports over the past few years. She played field hockey for three years and received the Southwestern Conference Mench Potters' mention. But cross for two years, track for one year, and was a state qualifier. But her love for gymnastics stands out the most with four years during which she was named All-American. Ball, bars, beam, floor, and all around. Wow, outstanding. Southwestern Conference First Team All-Conference, two-time Southwest Conference All-Around Champion, State Open All-Around Qualifier, First Team All-State, 2018 Southwest Conference Demon Bars Champion, and 2018 Women's Qualifier at Walton Bars, placed 24th and 19th respectively. And whereas Michaela isn't competing, she's volunteering. She volunteered to help the field hockey coach, Assyrio, with the youth intro to field hockey program through Parks and Rec. And also volunteered several veterans at foreign work events. And whereas in her spare time, Michaela enjoys gymnastics, practicing 11 hours a week with that busy schedule you got, working out at gym, hanging out with friends, shopping, and working at Panera as well. Now therefore, I repeat, ask to hereby express the town of New Milford's congratulations to Michaela Dumas for her dedication to all she does and wishes the best of luck while representing Team Connecticut at the Senior Nationals being held in Fort Myers, Florida in May 2018. And here's another example of just the tremendous talents of the wonderful young people we have in this town. It just makes this town so great. So whereas Mel Ortiz was born November 11, 1999, in Danbury, Connecticut, to Anne Marie and Anna Ortiz, and brother to Joanne and Sarah Ortiz, and whereas Mel is currently a member of the senior class at New Milford High School, will be attending George Mason University in Virginia with a class of 2022. Congratulations. And whereas Mel is an active member of the New Milford High School Wrestling Team, earning several awards, his accomplishments include 2018 Southwest Conference Champion, Class L Championship in the 128-pound class, 2018 New England High School Wrestling Champion in 126-pound weight class, earned third place at the National High School Coaches Association Nationals Senior Division, and also earned All-American for the third time. Outstanding. Whereas Mel is competing, he offers his knowledge of wrestling to the New Milford Youth Program, paying for it, bringing it back to the young guys. That's outstanding. He is also a co-facilitator for the New Milford High School Anti-Defamation League, and also helps with the Veterans Day Dinner at St. Francis Xavier Church. And whereas in his spare time, if you have any, he, Mel, enjoys fishing, swimming, and traveling. I'm there, now therefore, I, Pete, ask to hereby express the town of New Milford's congratulations to Mel Ortiz for his dedication to wrestling, and wishing the best of luck at the Nationals Wrestling Championships in Virginia over the Memorial Day weekend with Team Connecticut and his wrestling career at George Mason University. Here. It's outstanding. It's to find young people just to reflect the fire count and what it's all about. So I thank you again. Outstanding. Next, I'd like to do the mayoral comments, if I could, the remarks. And first, I'd like to thank everyone that attended the State of the Town meeting that we gave, both those that were here in person and those that were watching it on live stream and then taped. It was great to see the enthusiasm that the people have for the town and where we're headed. Also, thank you again, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also like to talk about some good news. Carolyn from the Senior Center let us know that we received a $2,500 grant for our chores program who helps our older citizens. So that's great that we got from the Connecticut Community Foundation, a $2,500 grant for our chores program. Outstanding. Next, as you'll see on our agenda, there's going to be an item concerning Sega Park, and that's one of the hidden treasures for those that haven't been there yet. That's over by Boardman Bridge, and it's a true gem that this town has. If you haven't walked that park, it's absolutely breathtaking and outstanding. One of the things CLNP let us know is a certain part of that parcel needed to have its license redone because we've had a five-year term license that kind of expired. So they let us know that if we wanted to continue, I said, of course we do. So they were very gracious enough to not only extend the contract but backdate the portion that we didn't have. So that's going to be on our agenda. The next is I'd like to thank the public that attended our town meeting prior to this concerning our $6 million road package. We had 104 people in the room. It was 104, I believe, 103, 104 to nothing to allow us to begin the process of rebuilding and repairing our roads. So I thank the public for attending and voicing their trust in us to move that forward. I'd also like to let the council know that we're continuing to work with our Board of Education on the $700,000 that were still needed for this year to give our portion of the state monies that were reduced this year. The Board of Education is working very diligently on coming up with their portion. I'm meeting with them probably about every 10 days. So I thank Chairman Lawson, my Josh Smith, Wendy Fallenback, Tammy McInerney. We've been meeting and coming up with the Greg Osipoff. Our finance director has been involved in those as well. Also, we've been meeting with the facilities. We've been meeting with Mr. Martin, who's our facilities head, Mr. Zarba on the Board of Ed side as well. We've been meeting with Anthony and their Facilities Department as well about looking at economies of scale. When we need to buy things, whether it ends up being roofs or whether it means energy, if we can buy together, there's economies of scales that we can use to help us offset those costs to our taxpayer. So we've had some great head starts. What I'll be bringing to the council in May is the beginning of our long-term capital strategy projects so we can begin to see what needs are going to be in the future for all of our infrastructure. So we're going to begin that process so that we can see and begin to plan. So I thank Mike, the DPW, as well as our Board of Ed partners. Something also as well is some of the subcommittees have begun to meet. Our community subcommittee has met a couple of times at John Pettibone, and they're beginning the process of looking at the community center and its needs. The Facilities Utilization Committee has met, and they're beginning their process to review all of our infrastructure, our assets, as far as are we utilizing them in the best and most efficient way that we can, all to represent the taxpayers and making sure that we're doing it in a proper fashion. Also as well, charter revision is continuing to move forward. One of the things that we've done is for everybody, we've been revamping our town website, which is www.nu milford.org. If you haven't been there in a while, you can come and see, we've changed the front page. We've changed a lot of the different capabilities. One of them, if you click the Government tab, you go to Boards and Commissions, you're going to see the Temporary Commissions. The first one that just came up is Charter Revision. So you can go to there, you can click on the tab, and your email, if you so chose, will go to the Chair and the Vice Chair so that your comments and your suggestions can be captured and be sent to the committee. We're also doing that, hopefully that will be up by the end of Business Day tomorrow for the Facilities Committee and the Community Center Committee. So we're going to continue to press those forward. Also, we have this live streamed for our town council meetings, and also we have those that will be available at the town website as well. So the more information we can get out to the public, the better. So with that, I'd like to move on to the next agenda item. That's approval of the minutes.
She'll move.
Second. Any discussion on the approval of the March 26, 2018 minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
Six, Parks and Rec.
Yes, ma'am.
Move to accept a request from Parks and Recreation to accept a donation of $100 from the family of Mr. Robert Farrell, 14 Puttum Road in New Milford, in honor of his 95th birthday. This donation is to be placed in the New Milford Gift Fund to be used for a summer camp scholarship.
Second. Any discussion? Dr. Bone.
I was having a conversation with Mr. Farrell last week. He often goes through holiday for lunch. So I was talking with him, and after I left lunch, I called up his son Billy. I said, Billy, your dad's in better shape than you, you know that. Billy's 50 years old. It's amazing how sharp Mr. Farrell is and how good shape he's in. It's really, I hope to be there in five years. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Road closures. Move to accept temporary closure of Main Street, the southern crossover across Main Street, westbound portion of Bridge Street, Railroad Street, and Bennett Street for the setup, duration, and breakdown of Memorial Day Parade, approximately 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on Monday, May 28, 2018. An extra half hour is added to the normal timeframe of the pass to allow color guard to march to Veterans Bridge to honor the Navy and Merchant Marine Veterans.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Under Personnel, move to accept the updated job description.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
You didn't want to do it before.
No.
That's why I was doing it.
No, I just wanted to say on this personnel item, the discussion of possible action, with the council's pleasure, I'd like to withdraw that until the next meeting. And the reason being is following a new procedure that we're going to be putting in place for our new job descriptions. We want to go through certain procedures, and one of them being that it goes to our town attorney to make sure that all the legalese is correct. It did not go over there yet. So I want to make sure that that's done, and then we'll move that forward at the next meeting, if that's okay with everybody. Thank you.
Let's just withdraw.
Yeah, just withdraw.
So now, we'll move to item number nine, Public Works. Motion for discussion of possible action to authorize the expenditure of up to $13,500 from the Waste Management Royalty Fund. The account number for that is 31000000000-59902. This is for the purchase of a refurbished four-cubic yard compactor unit to be used at the recycling center.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Hannah, if you'd like to come up.
In case I have questions. The bulky, the four cubic yard compactor that we're asking, the current bulky waste compactor that we have, about two months ago developed a strange noise. So in order to rectify it, we brought out a company that, the company that we bought it from, actually, I was on a committee back in 2010 that purchased all this equipment. So we brought out East Coast containers to take a look at it, and their determination was that the power unit itself was bypassing, and as a result of that, the pistons inside, which create the forced compact, were also bypassing. So I asked for an estimate to repair and an estimate for a brand-new one. His estimate to repair was between $18,000 and $23,000. And that's the wide range there is because once they get into it, obviously, if there's a floor that needs to be redone or other items that they can't see. I asked for the cost of a new one. Initially, it told me it was $35,000. When he sent me the written quote, it went up to $46,500. So that not being acceptable, I reached out to another company that I used to work with to have them come out and kind of like a doctor, give me a second opinion. He came out and his estimate to repair was about $19,500. So we're in the ballpark. He estimated it was the exact same thing, and again, once we get into it, we don't know what we're going to find. So with all that being said, I then reached out to a company I used to work for, All-American Waste, and spoke with my old boss and asked if they had any units that were available for purchase. They have a number of four cubic yard compactors. He put together a price for me. They're going to totally refurbish it, so it'll be like brand-new. It'll be a brand-new rebuilt piston in it. The power unit will be brand-new. It's going to have all the bells and whistles that we like to have to tell us about when it's full so we can maximize our potential with it. And one thing, another thing that it will have is OSHA has recently decided that you have to keep people 42 inches away from moving parts. So in order to do that, and if you've ever been to a recycle center and watched the compactor crush, which not just adults do, but children love to watch it crush things, unfortunately, when it crushes things, it also throws them. So we have to be very careful when people are around. So what they're going to do is they're going to install a cage around it for us so that we can close the door. It won't operate with the door open. So, and that will also meet the OSHA requirements. That's a new requirement. The other compactors that we have are not, it's not, they don't have to be retrofitted. So once we decide to get them refurbished, we can then add what we have to fix those. So in addition to that, they're going to give us a one-year warranty on parts and labor. And if any of you've been in the business of purchasing and using, to get a one-year warranty is out of this world. Everyone else offered a 90-day warranty.
Right, usually 90 days, sure.
It's a 90-day.
Kate.
Thanks, Bob. Just a couple of questions. So it's used?
Correct.
Right, okay. I'm not ignorant to machinery, but on this type of thing, is its lifespan measured by hours of use or amount of tonnage it crushes? How do you gauge whether something 10 years old or 5 years old is good, bad, or indifferent?
A big portion of it is this, this compactor has averaged about six tons a week for eight years.
Tonnage.
So if you multiply that out, you're looking at about 400 and something thousand pounds of material that have gone through it.
Okay. And the one that you're looking at purchasing, the 13.5, how many hour, ton-hours has that got?
That, those are machines that were in the Stop &amp; Shop stores. Stop &amp; Shop started to, they were cardboard compactors. That's all that went through them was cardboard.
So much.
So there's no wear on the, on any of the metal or anything like that. But when Stop &amp; Shop now does their own cardboard recycling.
And is there a value to the one we're going to get rid of?
Just scrap value.
I see. No parts?
No. I mean, I have to look, I'm going to have to see if the piston is the same, we could take before scrapping, we could take this piston out and rebuild it because to your question of the length, the maintenance is everything.
Yeah, right.
We just started rebuilding, we rebuilt one of our recycled containers last year, and that has, because that was starting to bypass, which we found out. We've got another one scheduled to go in and get refurbished.
Was the unit that just failed, the compactor from 2010, was it new in 2010?
Correct.
So is that a, is that a lifespan we can expect from this one? Eight years?
Maintenance is everything.
No, I hear you. I hear you. I just wondered if it was brand-new, what would...
Maintenance will, will extend the life of any...
Okay, so we're going to hear about it for at least 20 years.
So if you can... The life expectancy, honestly, of this used one would probably be about another seven years, which, and what our plan is, is to hopefully put a little capital aside.
Prepare.
Because we can get a brand-new 25-yard compactor, or four-yard compactor from All-American Waste for the neighborhood of $27,000.
Got you.
But this is kind of buys us time because we're, you know, we did spend some money on maintenance on some of the other compactors this year.
How long a new one lasts, did you say?
A new one? Again, with maintenance, I mean, the containers themselves will last 30 years. The only, the trash compactor that we have, that'll go, about the only thing that's going to go wrong with, other than if you rebuild the pistons, is the power unit itself. And a power unit's like a hit and miss because it's outside all the time. I've seen them last as long, there's one down in Brookfield that's been there over 30 years. But again, that company has routine maintenance done and all that. So we do have a maintenance schedule that we've developed. We clean out, one of the parts is cleaning out the pistons to make sure like all the recycling can get in there. We dig those out twice a year, which is acceptable. Our maintenance people on the new one that they rebuilt, they actually put extenders on the grease fittings so that we can grease them from the outside so we don't have to take everything off.
Who's going to do the cage? Is that something you buy? You're going to make your own OSHA-approved cage?
The one that is, All-American is doing this one. And this price includes install, pulling the old one off.
Next question.
One of our machines is going to have to help lift them because obviously they're pretty heavy. But the ones that we go with, the only OSHA part of it that's really any difficulty is the wiring of safety switches so that if you open the door, it shuts it off. And, you know, we have people that are capable of doing that.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Any other discussion? And just for the minutes...
This one I have to, I would just want to thank you for doing due diligence. Obviously, you went outside the realms and known connections over the years and known people. Doing the numbers, $60,000 for a new one, 13.5 for a used one. You get a 90-day on anything refurbished, but you happen to get a year. So if we can get three to five years, and he said maybe seven, you're still front-ending and the cost savings should be there. So I commend you for looking out. Some people just get one or two and say, that's it. So you reached out to people that are new in businesses around here. So thank you for doing due diligence to save me thousands of money.
And lastly, just for the minutes to reflect, there's a difference between what this, if approved by the council, there's two different funds from Waste Management. There's the Waste Management Royalty Fund, which is what this money's coming out of, and that is, one of the uses is for recycling. And then you have the Landfill Settlement Fund, which is what gets done for recreation and the other things. So there are two funds. So just so the public understands, this is coming out of the Management Royalty Fund. I spoke to Greg Osipoff, our finance director. This is a good use for it. So I just want to make sure that was clarified in the minutes. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Hannah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Item 10, under Town Council, make a motion to call a special town meeting at 6:45 p.m. on April 23, 2018, in the Paul Martin Room of the New Milford Town Hall on 10 Main Street, for the purpose of considering a declaration of easement for driveway utilities with respect to the open space accessway to Meadowland Drive as set forth on the map on file as 1087R, and to authorize the mayor to execute said declaration.
Second. Thank you. Just basically, the issue at hand here is the resident that has been on Meadowland Drive has been there for about 30 years. Unfortunately, being up that way, Eversource has, through its taking care of the transmission lines, has kind of torn up his driveway. So Eversource has stated they would work on fixing his driveway. So when they were looking at the road itself, the road impinged, or the driveway impinged on some town property. So we have a choice. One is we provide an easement, which in the case would be allowing the driveway to be where it is, as it's been for 30 years, or we could request him to move. And so moving on one side of the driveway is the actual electric line that goes to his property and his neighbor's property. On the other side is the cable. There may be other things in the ground, we don't know, it's been so long. For those that haven't been up Meadowland Way, the water table is a little high up there, and when it rains, your car can create some ditches or get stuck. The owner of the property put in additional gravel for the road that it is in now. When we were speaking to Eversource, they would not put in additional gravel onto a new road. The cost would be very prohibitive for them to move the electric line. So giving them an easement on a driveway that's already there seemed to be the most amenable way. So just asking for a town meeting so that we can talk about that, if we could do that, that would be great. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Someone set the meeting?
Yes, ma'am. Can I make a motion to set the meeting? Oh, you already did that, right? Yes. So 6:45 on April 23.
You got to come over late next time? Is that what you're saying? I'll come over later.
Yes, right before.
Okay. Number, item 11, move for discussion and possible action to authorize Mayor Pete Bass to enter into the Second Amendment to extend license agreement between Connecticut Light and Power Company, doing business as Eversource Energy, and the town of New Milford, Connecticut, to continue its use of property known as Sega Park. Said term of this extension will be from September 30, 2013, to September 20, 21.
Second. Any discussion? So we got a call from CLNP, or Eversource it is now. There's a certain part of the park itself that we have what's called the Park Cooperative License Agreement, and it's to use the 65 acres of property on River Road adjacent to the Sega Meadows Park property. That actually expired, so they asked us to, if we would like to continue with that, and we can. There isn't a thousand, there's a $1,000 administrative fee, but no rent. So what they asked us to do is to re-execute the lease, and then it also goes in for another four years. And then we would renew it after the four years, if everybody wanted to continue on. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Yep. Next. Yep. Next, I'd like to do an update to the council concerning economic development. So a couple of things, that's some good news. First is the Economic Development Commission. So the commission, I met with them about, I'm going to say, a month ago. And one of the things that the commission has decided to take on, which we appreciate, is they're going out and they're talking to our existing base of businesses. And they're asking them a few things. They're asking them what they like about New Milford, why they kind of came here, and then what are some of the things that we could do to help them not only grow their business, but more importantly, sustain their business as well. So we've got about 25 businesses that we have spoken to, got some good feedback, and are continuing to monitor that process, which, once we get a little more heft with the people that we have talked to, I will bring that to the town council and kind of show you where some of the goods and some of the needs to improvement things that we can work on. Also, we have reformed our Economic Development Corporation. Mr. Nahon sits on there as well, as well as Mr. Esposito. We had our first meeting two Thursdays ago, was it? Basically, what that does is it allows us to get some other grants and funding opportunities to help our businesses both here now and ones that want to move. The good news is, we have money available for facade improvements here in the downtown. And we also have money available for micro lending. So if you're a small business and you need to buy your first piece of equipment, or you need to purchase a new widget, you can come to the corporation, and we'd be happy to entertain seeing if there's an opportunity for us to help you. The goal of that is to help that one- or two-person business grow. And when they grow, they may add jobs to our town. They may buy a piece of property or rent a piece of property. And the goal is then, once they get their feet together, we then move them into the community banks, and they begin to grow and prosper. Also with this committee, I've spoke to our grant writer, and I've told her we really want to explore all funding opportunities so we can continue to move forward. Our Riverfront Revitalization Committee, headed by Mayor Furman, has also been in contact. And we're looking, as we have both in the past administration and this one, how we revitalize that riverfront to maximize our economy here in New Milford, to provide jobs, growth, homes. We can continue to move the town forward. Also, through economic development, some good news is, we've got some businesses that are moving here, which is very good. For those, we've got a, where Hank's Used Furniture is, which is up on 202, we're going to be having a warehouse facility put there on Route 7. We're going to have two medical, I'm going to say warehouses for better use there, moving forward. We've got some remediation work done on the Dodge place up here on 202. And I'm getting a lot of calls on people wanting to come here. We've met with some developers out of Westchester County. And one of the things I was telling them is, you have a great opportunity in New Milford because we're half the cost of where you are currently in Westchester County. So if you have any people that want to look at creating new opportunities, we're the place. We're open, and we want to do business. So I'm very excited about these opportunities. I'll update the council again next month on some more things that are going to be happening. So it's very exciting, exciting times. So I just wanted to update the council. Thank you.
Sounds great. Item 12, move to accept the following reappointments and appointments to boards, commissions, and committees for discussion and possible action. The youth agency, appointment of Maureen Ann Price, Democrat, filling vacancy from April 9, 2018 through November 30, 2018. Want to do these all together, or would you like them separately? All together, everybody in?
Yep.
Historic Properties Commission, appointment of Michael Lee Anderson, unaffiliated. He's an alternate, filling a vacancy again April 9, 2018 through November 30, 2019. Commission on the Arts, appointment of Mary Kimball, unaffiliated, filling vacancy April 9, 2018 through November 30, 2019. Housing Partnership, appointment of Carolyn Haglen, Republican, filling a vacancy made in the agent commission, April 9, 2018 through November 30, 2019. Arbor/Tree Subcommittee, appointment of Carlos Caradat, unaffiliated, April 9, 2018 through September 10, 2018. Nonprofit Subcommittee, appointment of, and I'll read the term at the end, they're all the same, appointment of Michael T. Sanello, Libertarian, appointment Catherine Francis, Republican, appointment of Walter O'Connor, Republican, appointment of Cameron Mirakami, Connie, Republican, appointment of Sharon L. Ward, Democrat, all from April 9, 2018 through September 10, 2018. Road Advisory Committee, reappointment John Whitman, unaffiliated, reappointment Joseph Goodell, unaffiliated, reappointment Robert Barone, unaffiliated, reappointment of John Oaks, Democrat, reappointment Geraldine Lukovitz, Democrat, reappointment Thomas D. Altermat, Republican, all members, term of April 13, 2018 through October 12, 2018. And last but not least, Lanesville Fire Substation Trustees, reappointment of Robert B. Webster, Republican, December 1, 2017 through November 30 of 2020.
Second.
Any discussion?
I know about Carolyn Haglen, so I didn't see you there.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay. Item 13, Executive Session. I move for the town council to enter into executive session with respect to strategy and our negotiations with respect to New Milford V Standard Demolition Services, Inc., docket number LLICV 16-13214 from Litchfield.
Second.
We'd like to ask the attorneys, Tower, Grimes...
And then Mr. Stanton.
Mike Zarba and Dan Stanton, town engineer, to join us.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll go into executive session.
Thank you, folks.
Please note, there was no motions taken. So I'd like to...
Move to come back to, out of executive session into open session?
Second.
Any discussion?
8:15 p.m.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.